I like it.
There you go.
Are we ready? Because I am. Good afternoon. I would like to call the order, the September 4th, 2019 Newport News City Planning Commission meeting. So how are everyone, how is everyone doing today? Good. The Chair recognized Commissioner Gross.
Newport News Planning Commission is mandated by state law and its members are appointed by City Council. Section 15.2, Act 2210 of the Code of Virginia states in part that every locality shall create a planning commission in order to promote the orderly development of locality and its environment. The statutory purpose is to improve the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the citizens, and to plan the future development of the communities. In serving this statutory, statutory purpose, the commission invites the comments at the public hearing of interested citizens of matters before it and welcomes your presence. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda before us.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda before us. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Thank you. We will now have an invocation by Commissioner Fox.
Um, yes, I'd like to ask, um, everyone if they would join me in prayer as we pray for the wisdom to make decisions today that will help guide the city to a bigger and better, um, ability to serve our citizens. And please give us the wisdom to understand what we need to do and the knowledge to know what we do not need to do. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I trust that all the commissioners had the opportunity to review the minutes from August 7th public hearing and the August 21st work session. If there are no additions, corrections, deletions, the minutes will stand as printed. Any comments? Good. I will now open the public hearings portion of our meeting. Our first plan, our first item on the agenda is a plan amendment. It's PL 2019-001, and this will be presented by Ms. Hopkins. Good afternoon, Ms. Hopkins.
Good afternoon. Today I will be presenting four plan amendments. The first request is to change the land use designation from government military to community commercial for property located at 7401 Wickham Avenue. The property is located on the west side of Wark Boulevard. The existing uses include Eagle Technologies and Town Square condominiums to the north, Admiral Point Apartments and Simple Grace Ministries to the south, Kingdom Living Ministries, Peninsula Auto Auction, and vacant office building to the east, and Admiral Point Apartments to the west. The city's 2008 Framework for the Future Comprehensive Plan recommended a government military designation to reflect the former Marine Reserve Station. This land use designation carried through to the One City One Future Comprehensive Plan 2040. In 2018, City Council approved a conditional use permit for this location, which authorized the operation of a day services center for the provision of services for the homeless population. The Code of Virginia mandates all localities prepare and adopt a comprehensive plan for the physical development of land within its jurisdiction. After plan adoption, amendments to it must be referred to local planning commission for public hearing and approved and adopted by the local governing body. The city's adopted One City One Future Comprehensive Plan sets an annual plan review and amendment cycle. The One City One Future Comprehensive Plan designates the property for government military uses. Until 2016, the property had been used as a Marine Reserve Station. The property was acquired by the city and renovated to house the Four Oaks Day Service Center. The One City One Future Comprehensive Plan recognizes and commits to accessibility for all. It also acknowledges that the gap between rich and poor has not closed significantly over the past decade and includes recommendations to deploy services to address poverty and related concerns. The proposed amendment seeks to change the land use designation to community commercial, which aligns with land uses in the general area. And the reuse of the former Marine Reserve Station into the Four Oaks Day Service Center is consistent with the resiliency and accessibility recommendations of the One City One Future Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of PLN 2019-0001 to change land use map designation from government military to community commercial for property located at 7401 Wark Boulevard. Are there any questions?
Any, thank you. Any questioners or comments from?
I just want to clarify this. Didn't we do a rezoning of this property?
No.
No? Okay, when we had the daycare center?
That was a conditional use.
That was a conditional use permit, so that did not impact the land use of the zoning? When we granted that?
No.
Any other comments? I do have one. Um, again, this is a great adapt reuse for this, um, partial. And again, I like to thank staff for continuously, um, expanding our city and giving opportunities for our citizens to improve their lives. So this is a great thing that we did, um, a year ago. We did approve this, um, to allow this particular organization to come in and provide services to the city of Newport News. So again, I thank the staff for working with this organization and getting this plan together to benefit our citizens. Any other comments or questions? No comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Or do we going to go through all of them at one time? Since you present, we're going to do them each individually separately?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Mulvaney?
I move that we recommend a City Council adoption of plan amendment 2019-0001.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Melissa, please call the robe.
Commissioner Fox?
Four.
Commissioner Mulvaney?
Four.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Four.
Commissioner Stodgel?
Four.
Commissioner Whitcamp?
Four.
Commissioner Willis?
Four.
Commissioner Gross?
Four.
Commissioner Simmons?
Four.
Motion unanimous, eight to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners. We will now hear this case before City Council on September the 24th. Next amendment, please.
Our next amendment is a request to change the land use designation from low-density residential to high-density residential for properties located at 21, 23, 25, 33, 35, and 37 Sweetbrier Drive. The site is located on the north side of Sweetbrier Drive. Existing uses include Christopher Newport University Foundation Apartments and Single Family Dwellings to the north, Single Family Dwellings Office and Christopher Newport University Facilities to the south, Single Family Dwellings to the east, and Christopher Newport University Facilities to the west. The city's 1993 Framework for the Future recommended low-density residential to reflect the existing single-family homes. This land use designation was carried through to our One City One Future Comprehensive Plan. However, in 2001, City Council approved a plan amendment to the 1993 Framework for the Future changing the land use designation from low-density residential to high-density residential on adjoining university property located at 39 Sweetbrier Drive. A conditional use permit was also approved for 39 Sweetbrier Drive to allow for the construction of five dormitory buildings. The One City One Future Comprehensive Plan recommends low-density residential for the site. The site contains seven single-family lots with cottage-style, single-family residential structures owned by the CNU Foundation. The Foundation strategically acquired these properties between 2007 and 2010, adjacent to property that they already owned at 39 Sweetbrier Drive to eventually expand their student housing. Uses related to CNU surround the proposed site on three sides. In conclusion, the One City One Future Comprehensive Plan recognizes the connection between the city's economic prosperity and the need to support sustainable growth of CNU. And the proposed high-density residential land use designation would support the expansion of CNU housing in this area. Staff recommends the adoption of PLN 2019-0002 to change the land use map designation from low-density residential to high-density residential for properties located at 21, 23, 25, 33, 35, and 37 Sweetbrier Drive. Are there any questions?
Thank you again, Ms. Hopkins. Are there any questions from the Commission?
I have a question, just pure curiosity. We have, uh, the numbers on Sweetbrier Drive, 21, 23, 25, 27, 33, 35, 37. What happened to 29 and 31?
There is no 29. If it's a nice sequence of numbers, they just didn't like that one.
Thanks.
The lot numbers don't match it.
Thank you, Ms. Hornsby. Thank you, sir. If next time you come up and introduce yourself, even though we all know who you are, it would be great if you can come up and give your address and name for record. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I, I have a question. Um, it's not really, you really can't tell by looking at the math, that's, you know, the color legend, but if you look at the, um, the, um, satellite image, the Google Earth image or whatever, um, when you take away, so the houses, these, these seven houses that they're, um, that the CNU Foundation owns, right now, the houses face Sweetbrier and the houses across the street face Sweetbrier. So you have this, um, residential edge, I'll call it a residential edge, and the backyards face CNU, so there already is sort of a natural buffer there. But when you take away those houses, um, and you build, you know, a four-story dormitory on there, now, the, the houses on the, uh, I guess that's the, what would that be? The south side, whatever.
South side.
The, they'll now be, their urban, their residential edge, um, they're sort of the last frontier of that edge, and, and they'll be facing, their front doors will be facing what could be a four-story dormitory. Is that a possibility?
To my understanding, it's supposed to be a buffer put there and something.
Well, right now, we're just going through the land use plan. How it will be developed will be determined when they come in for rezoning. But knowing that it's across the street from single-family, we will require some protection for those single-family homes that are across the street.
Right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Prior to taking a vote on these, we should be opening the public hearing and closing the public hearing for each item prior to voting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? If no other comments, then I will open the public hearing session to this. We do have one card on this, and Mr. Hornsby has spoken about it. They still like to, his card is submitted for questions only. So if you could, Mr. Hornsby, come up, please, um, introduce yourself so we can open, officially open the public hearing session.
I'm Doug Hornsby.
Thank you.
At, uh, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Real Estate Foundation. Pleasure to be here. My apologies for answering from my chair.
That's okay.
Uh, pleasure to be here. The, um, uh, staff is correct. What we're doing is just to making it the right zoning. It, it makes sense to be what it is. Excuse me. That, those properties, I believe, over 600 feet deep. And if and when, uh, if and when the university says it's time to do something and they want the foundation to do it, there's a ton of room there. I think we have a reputation, both from the shopping center we've purchased and the millions we've spent there, to the developments of the Starbucks and Chipotle. And everything around the university is done what I may call in Disney World class. It's Class A, it looks good. Uh, we are an economic engine in that district also. So I am certain that whatever is planned, when it's brought down, will be spectacular and appealing architecture and take into account all the good questions as to how that would, how it ought to look and what structures or berms or landscaping should be between. All that will be planned at a future date. This just allows us to come down and do what I believe makes sense. All the land around it we own. And, uh, you know, in this way, the, the, these, we own these properties, we lease them out, and they are not in good shape. So I, any other questions I might respond to?
Any other questions for Mr. Hornsby? No other questions. I do have a comment. The university has done a wonderful job, and they are an economic engine for the city of Newport News. And as the university continues to grow and evolve, we are looking for some of those students to be here and stay here within our great city. This city is a engine and a start point for the Hampton Roads area. And we appreciate everything in the business, men and women we have here that bring concepts and great things to our city. So we do appreciate your efforts.
As you well know, the university is working with the school system.
That's correct.
And the students, and, uh, it's just a great nexus. We want to serve the sons and daughters of Virginia first in, in this area also.
And I understand that. It's a great, it's a great business concept, and it's a great, uh, theory that the university places upon students to process through life. So we appreciate everything that you do and the university does and the foundation. Any other questions or comments? Great job.
Thank you, sir.
I will now close the public hearing session for 2019-002.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Fox.
I would like to make a recommendation that we recommend approval of this plan amendment 2019-0002 to City Council.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Melissa, please call the robe.
Commissioner Mulvaney?
Four.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Four.
Commissioner Stodgel?
Four.
Commissioner Whitcamp?
Four.
Commissioner Willis?
Four.
Commissioner Gross?
Four.
Commissioner Fox?
Four.
Commissioner Simmons?
Four.
Motion unanimous, eight to zero.
Thank you. This case will be heard before City Council on September the 24th, 2019. We will now continue with our plan amendment, moving to our next one. PL, PLN-2019-003, presented by Ms. Hopkins again.
This request is to change land use designation from regional commercial to industrial for properties located at 2200 Terminal Avenue, 520, 21st Street, and 1522 Harbor Lane. The site is located on the west side of Jefferson Avenue. The existing uses include the Newport Harbor Apartments to the north, Agape Hands Cathedral, Single Family Detached and Attached dwellings to the south, the Moton Theater, Porter's Cab Company, Gospel Spreading Church of God, Freedom Outreach Center, and other various commercial uses to the east, and Terminal Avenue, Interstate 664, and CSX right-of-way to the west. This site has been recommended for several different land uses over the years. The city's 1993 Framework for the Future Comprehensive Plan recommended high-density residential to reflect the existing public housing complexes. The land use designation changed in subsequent updates of the Comprehensive Plan to industrial in 2001, understudy in 2008, and to regional commercial in 2011 with the adoption of the Southeast Community Plan. The regional commercial designation has carried through to the current One City One Future Comprehensive Plan land use map. The properties formerly known as the Dickerson Courts Harbor Homes Public Housing Site were identified for regional commercial uses as part of the Southeast Urban Waterfront Design Study, the Southeast Community Plan, and carried forth in the One City One Future Comprehensive Plan. Those plans determine that this location would be appropriate for a large regional center containing different types of retailers that are accessible to large populations and can take advantage of the high-traffic volumes and visibility of the nearby Interstate 664. However, a smaller retail center and offices were developed in another area along Jefferson Avenue just north of this site on property that was originally slated for an industrial park. With all of the redevelopment efforts underway in the Southeast Community, the proposed site provides the opportunity to reestablish the potential for industrial and office uses to locate in the area. The proposed industrial designation complements the seafood industrial park just south of the site and the proposed activities identified in the Marshall Ridley Choice Neighborhood Transformation Plan. The Transformation Plan states, "The highest and best use for the former Dickerson Courts and Harbor Homes site is for economic development, which will provide an excellent opportunity to attract businesses to Jefferson Avenue and create jobs for the residents in the community." In conclusion, the site is located on a segment of Jefferson Avenue that was once a thriving center of the Southeast Community, but over time has experienced decline. Several projects have been started or successively completed in the vicinity of the site, including Jefferson Avenue Streetscape 1 and 2, Brooks Crossing, and the successful attainment of a Choice Neighborhoods Initiative Implementation Grant. All these efforts have set the tone for redevelopment of the community, especially for key properties like the former Dickerson Courts and Harbor Homes site. The culmination of these efforts have created an environment that will support redevelopment of the site to accommodate industrial uses. Staff recommenda, recommendation is adoption of PLN 2019-0003 to change the land use map designation from regional commercial to industrial for properties located at 2200 Terminal Avenue, 520, 21st Street, and 1522 Harbor Lane. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay.
Yes. I don't have a question. I do have a comment. Labor Day was Monday. My wife and I had occasion to travel down to the Shore Park area of Newport News, and we came down Jefferson Avenue. Now granted, I come down that area much more than she does. And we were driving down and, uh, it was right before 664, and, uh, I did point out that my brand-new and now solid-listening to the left. But as we came under 664 and we entered the area where Brooks Crossing is located, the new landscaping is located, my wife said, "Wow, look at this." So, "All the things that you guys are working on down there, it looks really good, and I appreciate it." And, "Wow, look at this." It's a good job. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. I do have a couple of questions, um, inside on the drawing. And again, I like to echo while I answer my questions and comments. The Housing Authority has done a wonderful job throughout the city revitalizing property, and I see the Choice Neighborhoods being another effort from Ms. Wildes and her staff to continue to produce great opportunities and housing opportunities here within the city and create some business areas. But moving forward with this, um, with these four here, uh, there's two yellow blocks inside. Is there any indication why those were separated for boundary lines? And also in addition, is the alley going to be included in this? Or would the alley be vacated? Or is the alley going to be, because there's an alley that runs between these properties all the way through. Is that going to be include, all-inclusive or would the, is that something that's?
The alley will remain.
Okay.
And the property on 22nd Street is developed townhouses currently.
Okay. That's what that was, in that little square box?
Yes.
Okay. I was trying to, I was trying to make that. Oh, right here?
Yeah.
I was further down with the, the townhomes with the, in the circle. I was talking about the first one on, in 22nd Street, right, where the townhouses are. Right behind that.
What about on 19th Street?
Across the street?
No, 19th Street, you go down to the end of 19th Street, there's a little.
Yeah, a little square there.
Terminal?
No, I think that's a pump station.
Oh, okay.
A pump sta, oh, a pump station? Okay, yeah, okay. I thought it was across the street. Okay. Thank you for the clarity. Any other comments or questions? Okay, no comments or questions? I will now open the public hearing session to, um, 2019-. Having no cards on this matter, um, I will now open and close the public hearing session to this. Melissa, please call the robe.
We don't have a motion.
Oh!
Mr. Chairman?
Moving too fast.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Mulvaney?
I move that we recommend a City Council adoption of plan amendment 2019-0004.
Second.
No, three.
Or three, I'm sorry, three. My bad. I changed the thing, my bad. Plan amendment 2019-0003.
Second.
Yeah.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Melissa, please call the robe.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Four.
Commissioner Stodgel?
Four.
Commissioner Whitcamp?
Four.
Commissioner Willis?
Four.
Commissioner Gross?
Four.
Commissioner Fox?
Four.
Commissioner Mulvaney?
Four.
Commissioner Simmons?
Four.
Motion unanimous, eight to zero.
Thank you. This case will be heard before City Council on September 24th. Our next item is amendment PL 2019-004, presented by Ms. Hopkins.
Thank you. This will be the last amendment for the day. This request is to change the land use designation from industrial to regional commercial for property located at 1200 Jefferson Avenue. The site is located on the east side of Jefferson Avenue. Existing uses include Ridley Place Public Housing to the north and east of the site, vacant industrial land to the south, Agape Hands Cathedral, outside storage, and the seafood industrial park to the west of the site. The land use designation for the property was industrial in the city's 2008 Framework for the Future Comprehensive Plan to reflect the previous industrial-use waterfront lumber. The industrial land use designation was carried through to the One City One Future Comprehensive Plan land use map. With the adoption of the Marshall Ridley Choice Neighborhood Transformation Plan, the property was identified as an opportunity for acquisition and remediation. The property had been home to waterfront lumber for 50 years. However, it was acquired by the Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority in 2018 during the development of the Marshall Ridley Choice Neighborhood Transformation Plan. The Transformation Plan identified the property as open space and parkland, which was the first exploration of what the site could become. Since then, further refinement of the redevelopment of the Marshall Ridley Choice Neighborhood has determined that this property would be more appropriate for regional commercial uses that can take advantage of its proximity to Interstate 664 and the larger Hampton Roads region and support the local residential community. The Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant identifies the site as a location for an open-air seafood farmer's market as well as other possible retail opportunities. The regional commercial land use designation complements the proposed redevelopment identified in the Marshall Ridley Choice Neighborhood Transformation Plan, particularly the Ridley Place Public Housing site, as well as expanding the commercial opportunities in the area. The One City One Future Comprehensive Plan recognizes that land use and aesthetics are primary factors that shape the urban environment and contribute to a sense of place. The regional commercial land use designation will assist in creating those unique characteristics that will make the Marshall Ridley Choice Neighborhood special. In conclusion, the proposed regional commercial designation supports the One City One Future Comprehensive Plan and the Marshall Ridley Choice Neighborhood Transformation Plan, as well as supports the goal to improve the city's visual image through reinvestment by enhancing one of the city's major corridors. Staff recommends adoption of PLN 2019-0004 to change the land use designation from industrial to regional commercial for property located at 1200 Jefferson Avenue. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Comments? If no questions and comments, I will now open and close the public hearing session, having no cards on this matter, and the matters before the Commissions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Fox. Yes, Commissioner Fox.
I would like to recommend that we recommend approval of Plan Amendment nineteen dash zero 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 four to City Council for approval.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second, Melissa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Stoddel?
Four.
Commissioner Whitcamp?
Four.
Commissioner Willis?
Four.
Commissioner Gross?
Four.
Commissioner Fox?
Four.
Commissioner Mulvaney?
Four.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Four.
Commissioner Simmons?
Four.
Motion unanimous, eight to zero.
Thank you. This case will be heard before City Council on September the twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. We will now move to our executive secretary report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just need to update you on the upcoming agenda. September the eighteenth, there'll be a special exception at Ten Sweet Bar Drive to reduce the transitional buffer area. And on October the second, the Demby Work Area Plan will be coming to you. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. October the second, sounds good. Any questions, comments from our commissioners? Any committee reports? Any unfinished business? Any new business? Yes. We do have some new business that I would like for us to discuss is in reference to amendment to our bylaws here for the planning commission. And I'd like to open that discussion from our work session. We have before us an amendment to amend our bylaws. And we'll start with the business procedure in order. The amendment is in place for our order of business. One, as everyone has it, has determination of quorum. Two, call to order. Three, creed approved, approval of the agenda. Four, invocation, pledge of allegiance. Five, approval of minutes. Six, agenda items. Seven, executive secretary report. Eight, committee reports. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven, adjournment in section two deals with the authority. Section three is dealing with minutes. Do we have any comments or corrections? Anything anyone like to express as we have entities in our work session?
Basically, we're adding the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right. The new things that are new to this new order of business is the creed will now have an official name there. It's number three. And in number four, we are adding the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
With the invocation. Comments, concerns, questions?
So, so let me just understand, we're adding just the Pledge of Allegiance and just the creed?
We are officially putting the creed on paper where it should be. The creed has always been a part of the order of business, but it just wasn't really mentioned in our bylaws. So we're officially now identifying where it should be.
I got you.
And a little further clarification on the creed. If you hear the creed towards the end of it, we recommend adoption of the agenda before us. So it was, it was always entailed in there. It just, that's one of the reasons we've added it, or we recommended it being added.
Any comments, questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
There seems to be a little bit of confusion, I guess, in terms of the invocation. And there has been, it seems to be it's kind of a, a touchy issue, not preying itself, but it's, certain people feel like, well, I can't say this word, I can't say that word, whether that word is, you know, God or Jesus or whatever it might be. What is the, what is the law? Can you not use those words? Can you use those words? Is it just politically incorrect?
We will defer that over.
We can look into that and get you a more formal response. In general, they're supposed to be nonsectarian, not favor one sect over another, which is why City Council invites different pastors from the community to come in at different meetings so that it's not always one person giving the conviction or invoking the same faith. But we can certainly do a little research and get some more information to you on some specifics there.
So if I understand, and I like your comment, as I heard you express what City Council does, which is not a bad idea for our, our commission to consider too, is inviting someone in from the community to come and do the invocation as well.
And?
That's not a bad idea.
Can we leave that for discussion? I mean, I think that would, I'm, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, that's fine.
But we're not voting on that, are we?
No.
I thought we were just voting on the?
Well, it just came up, so I just kind of echoed it and.
I thought we were just voting on the agenda.
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
But there are new thing, new changes to our bylaws that would affect that process. So the process that was just explained to us is different than what we have anticipated with this new order of business, because it will still leave for one of the commissioners to do the invocation.
But that's not what we're voting on, right?
That's not what we voted on. That's something different. What we're voting on is to add the Pledge of Allegiance and to make sure the creed is officially in, in space. We can have another discussion about the invocation at a later date. It won't be a change to the bylaws, because the invocation is not moving from the bylaws. It will be there, just determining who will be presenting it. Okay? We have clarity? Okay.
So, a question for Mr. City Attorney.
Sure.
I, I guess what you're saying is when the City Council clerk invites pastors to come down to give the invocation, they are expressly intent upon not inviting twenty-six weeks straight of Baptist ministers or of Episcopalian ministers. They do their best to make sure that there is a broad variety of religions represented. Is that part of that process?
That's a fair representation.
That's a fair representation.
I would say, I would have to agree with them. It is a great fair representation. A lot of times responding, and again, is our citizens' response as pastors and leaders to show up. I do know that they get an invitation, a phone call is going out, everyone doesn't show up. Everyone's schedule doesn't allow them to attend all the time. So there are some other scenarios and other things there that, that will limit that process. But I'm well assured that our city follows our regulations.
So, Mr. Chairman, and I understand the questions and concerns. However, I think what the agenda before us is basically, are we adding the Pledge of Allegiance in addition to the invocation that's currently in our bylaws? And we're clarifying the fact that the creed is actually, the word creed is being added because it actually did accrue the approval of agenda. The discussion we're having pertains to another discussion as overall for the invocation. Ultimately, I think before us, we're asking a vote on whether or not we should add the Pledge of Allegiance to our current bylaws and then add the word creed.
That is correct. That is correct.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we add the amendment to the Planning Commission bylaws, Article eleven Business Procedures, Section one Order of Business as it's presented in our agenda.
Second.
Yes, been properly moved and second, Melissa, please call the roll.
Discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry. Discussion. More discussion?
Reading this, it seems to me it could be done in a little, little bit, slightly more clear fashion. The section four, where it has invocation slash Pledge of Allegiance. If we want to be doing both, maybe it should say invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. One could read this as is and either or. And I don't think that's what we want. I think we want to say we want invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
So maybe we should reword that? Maybe it should say and?
Just for clarification from our meeting, our work session meeting, you all had asked us to put it in slash so you could do either or.
So we?
Did we say that?
Let's discuss that. Is that what we want, ladies and gentlemen?
We have discussed.
I don't, I don't think I remember.
Yeah, I was getting ready to.
I think what we discussed was we were adding.
Doing both.
Both of them.
Yes.
We had gone through a couple iterations where we had talked about we could either do one or the other, but we decided that the amendment going forward would be that we would do both of them.
Did I, did I?
If you look at our minutes.
That's what I was just going to too as well.
In our minutes, it says, Mr. Mulvaney stated he would like to discuss whether the Planning Commission has the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation, either one or the other. Leave, leave the bylaws as is or take out the invocation. Either, that's what it's.
Right.
Well, it says both then.
Yeah.
Correct. So, let me ask this question to our attorney. Can we amend the?
Motion?
Motion.
I can change my motion.
To reference that we're gonna do both. Yes.
That is correct. And it's mentioned in minutes. We just kind of dig it all.
So we're waiting on the answer for that?
Yes, sir. Yes, we need to rescind the prior motion and then you can make an amendment, or make a mo- a new motion to adopt it with the amendments agreed upon by the board.
I'd like to rescind my first motion, but I'd also like to say then on number three, would you like it to say creed and approval of agenda?
I was going to suggest that, yes. Let's do, it's consistent.
Would you like to make a new motion?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make an emotion, motion that we. That we, to accept the amendment to Planning Commission bylaws, Article eleven Business Procedures, Section one Order of Business with the changes to line three to say creed and approval of the agenda and line four invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second, Melissa, please call the roll.
Discussion.
Discussion. Go ahead.
Yes. I, I would say this. There are several here who want to have a further discussion about the invocation and how we handle that. So, to me, I, I mean, I'm gonna, I, I think I'm gonna vote yes on this, on these, with these modifications especially. But since there are some who want to have the discussion about how the invocation is handled and can it be handled in a different fashion, I would suggest that we, at some point, I don't know when, have that discussion of how we might handle the invocation itself differently, which I believe would be a separate discussion. Whether we want to have that discussion today, whether we can have that discussion today, I don't know. But there are some that want to have that discussion.
And I'll, I'll say that, you know, invocation, you know, maybe it's more, you know, a word of inspiration that we get instead of, you know, it's an inspirational word that we give, you know, to guide us in our, in our work as opposed to the word invocation. Just a thought.
And I hear both of the discussions and I think they're a good thing, but again, it is a different topic than what we're voting on. I think it's something that we can bring to one of our work sessions or to another, you know, one of our next meetings to discuss how we get to that process and how that process is presented. The City Attorney presented one good valuable option is use the same format that City Council is using. Or we can discuss that further. I mean, I'm sure by the time we get a chance to discuss it, I'm, I'm well aware of the capacity of our commissioners that we will have a great discussion on this. So let's move forward in the fashion that what we have before us and we surely will address what we need to on the invocation. Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna be infringing on our First Amendment rights? Because let's say that everyone here was gonna do an invocation every other meeting or whatever. And I wanted to do an invocation a certain way, you wanted to do an invocation a certain way. Would we be infringing on our First Amendment rights if we were told what we had to say? Or couldn't say?
As you note, and as you do know, there are certain policies, procedures, and formats that we have to follow as guidelines.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution as well. And it's up to that individual, right, for that individual to speak his own words. And so I, I personally do not have either way, because if I want to use the name and say the name, I'm going to say it, regardless of what I'm under. So, we can table again this conversation and have this conversation later, because if I want to use this name, I'm gonna use this name.
Personally, I think we should go ahead and vote on what we have in front of us.
Well, we have a, we have an item before us. I think we need to call.
The discussion has gone off topic just a little bit.
Just a little bit. Just a little.
I think we should just call the roll.
Call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Whitcamp?
Four.
Commissioner Willis?
Four.
Commissioner Gross?
Four.
Commissioner Fox?
Four.
Commissioner Mulvaney?
Four.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Four.
Commissioner Stoddel?
Four.
Commissioner Simmons?
Four.
Motion unanimous, eight to zero.
Thank you, commissioners. As always, we always have very, very, very fruitful and very, very good discussions in our work sessions. So again, I thank all the commissioners for coming, bringing their minds, their time, and everything that it takes to be a part of this commission and to continue to help our city develop and grow and support our staff. Again, hands off to staff for the great job that they do in preparing everything that's need for our city to be moved forward. Nothing else said, meeting adjourned.